One nation, America, individual, diversity and justice.
Rule call.
Bill Henry, here. Joseph Jones, here. Harms?
Present.
Mike Jones, here. Lefredo, here.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Move, second.
Rule call.
Bill Henry, you have Joseph Jones, yes. Lefredo, yes. Mike Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to open the public hearing. Rule call.
Bill Henry, yes. Joseph Jones, yes. Lefredo, yes. Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
This has to do with the publications publishing, the minutes, not the minutes, but the agenda on three, four different locations, City Hall, Public Safety Building, Ivy, and also on the website. It's just to kind of correct everything that is out there in the ordinance or in any documentation. Hear any comment from the public? Counsel? Rule call.
Need motion to move.
Motion to close.
Motion to close.
Now, rule call.
Bill Henry, you have Joseph Jones, yes. Lefredo, yes. Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
Follow script. Next item is consideration, first reading of ordinance nineteen ten, amending the code of ordinances by amending chapter eighteen oh five publications, the posting locations. Motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Rule call.
Bill Henry, yes. Joseph Jones, yes. Lefredo, yes. Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
We're pleased to have a special guest tonight, Greg Edwards of Catch Des Moines.
And, Mary, evening, counsel, chief, beloved guests, the world of your life is about to happen. We are Catch Des Moines, right now, greater Des Moines, professional business bureau, very crowded, represent the city, wins your rights, along with fifteen other communities around the metro area. Kind of a recap, an update on where we stand and things that are happening with us. Our main mission is to bring in new visitors to the metro area. Visitors being meetings, conventions, sporting events. These are travelers, business travelers, bus tours, et cetera. Obviously, what we do increases economic value to all of our communities. We've seen a lot of hotel growth throughout the metro. I'm sharing this graph with everybody I speak to anymore to show them the growth. You go back as far as, actually go back to about two thousand nine, so eight years, or excuse me, ten years ago, we've grown by nearly five thousand hotel rooms in the metro area. Our estimation by the end of this year will have over thirteen thousand rooms. By the end of twenty twenty-two, we'll have over fourteen thousand rooms in the entire metro. New hotel developments also listed on this slide. These hotels range from downtown hotels, the biggie being Hotel Fort Des Moines, is planning to reopen sometime after the first of the year. But there's projects related throughout the entire metro area as they continue. Performance-wise, hotel-wise, we're holding our own with the increase of rooms. Happy to say we've held on to occupancy levels, increased occupancy levels slightly, which is a good sign. I think the real key is that the demand of number of rooms sold still is up about, what, eighty thousand some rooms over last year, so the demand is strong, which is also a good sign for our industry. Our sales rise continued to increase too. Our board makes sure that we have aggressive sales goals annually. Our goal this year, or last year, was about three hundred and thirty-some bookings. We came in with three hundred and forty-four total bookings for the metro. This year, our goal is over three hundred and fifty bookings. An example of some of those bookings, and we concentrate a lot on what we call citywide business. Citywide business are groups that would occupy over twelve hundred rooms on one given night, which obviously will impact the entire metro area. And some of the large citywides that we just completed this year with a general assembly of Christian shirts, disciples of Christ, that were here with roughly about six thousand people. The toilet USA track and field championships, which were here last summer at Drake Stadium. The PEO convention, international convention, was held here just a couple of months ago that brought in over five thousand people. And some of the things on the docket are USA wrestling, preseason, national office, obviously the presidential caucus, which we can't really claim we booked that, but we do do a lot to support the efforts of the caucus. Folks style wrestling championships, a big volleyball tournament, which is the JVA challenge, World Pork Expo, fingers crossed, we'll be back again next year. And one of the babies we booked for next year is the Ironman North American Championships here in the metro. Major initiatives, as I mentioned, we booked three hundred and fifty-three new events last year. We hosted nine citywides. We meet with the hotel community periodically. That's the big thing, they always say, we want more citywides, we want more citywides. Because obviously, that does have such a huge impact on everybody in the metro. Nine is really kind of the ideal numbers to bring in. And that doesn't count the normal stuff that comes in over the year, like the Drake Relays, Drake Graduation, state basketball tournaments, state track and field championships. These are nine new business pieces of conventions where sporting events we draw in. We're also in the works of unveiling our new destination master plan, which is a big strategic plan for us that's been ongoing since about February this year. We hired a company called JLL, you may be familiar with them, the commercial real estate business. They also have a tourism arm, they're doing these destination plans really throughout the world. So they're coming back with us with a great synopsis on what are we going to do to not only sustain the tourism industry in the metro, but how are we going to grow it and continue to flourish in the next three to five years? We'll be rolling that up probably the next couple of months, once it goes back to our board. We did create just recently what we call our customer advisory board. A lot of the larger CDBs across the country have these, and we just implemented one here. And this is where we brought in fourteen different planners from across the country of all shapes and sizes, religious conference planners, agriculture convention planners, corporate planners, sports event planners, a good mixture of all kinds of different planners out there. We brought them in for a three-day seminar, we got a facilitator. We talked to them about what we have here in Des Moines, what we need here, what can we do to attract them in the future, their national connections primarily. We got some great feedback on that as well, so we're well happy with that. We also just a couple of months ago, you may have seen, launched our new ad campaign called the S's are silent. How many times you get off an airplane and then flight attendant says, "Welcome to Des Moines." And we all cringe, and then I have to talk with him as I get off the plane. The S's are silent, duh, Des Moines, got it. We also established a new frontline training program that we started primarily for hotel frontline employees, restaurant servers, whoever's really in the public hospitality field, training them on service techniques, what to talk about when they have a client that says, "Oh, I'm from out of town, what's there to do this week, what's going on in the metro area," to talk about everything from new outlet malls to other developments in the metro and some of the major attractions we have here. New regional projects, obviously, we're heavily involved in Central Iowa Water Trails Project. I think there's five of our staff members that, I'm on the main board, other staff members are on the marketing and development and all these other created boards. We're very active in the boards at skate parks, you probably heard about that skate park. Excited about that, it's going to be the largest skate park in the country. We've been in contact with Red Bull, Mountain Dew, Monster, all these big companies that do all these huge skateboarding tournaments. Skateboarding twenty twenty will be a little explored as well, so we're excited about that. The Mid-Meridian Energy Rec Plaque on West Des Moines is another huge thing for us, bringing in more sporting events, a lot of new more stuff, more ice events, hockey, in particular, Des Moines Public Market, you've probably read the pros and cons of that if you still subscribe to the register. Working on that as well, and then of course, soccer stadium, now there's no soccer stadium to talk about, but we're involved with the crowds moving up the soccer league sound as well. We send this out to you, it's kind of disturbing to us, we're trying to figure out a better way to do this. This is our monthly brief that we send to all of you, all the councils throughout the metro, about two hundred plus people. The bad news is the open rate on this is seven percent. So we can't figure out if this is going into people's spam, or if people are going, oh, it's just another report. But this monthly report will show you all the activities from the previous month, what we're working on, where we did sales trips, the marketing campaigns that we're doing, what we booked that month, et cetera, so kind of a important piece. We are revamping this, I'm sure by after the first few years, you'll see a new format, and hopefully more people will read to catch up on what's going on. Bottom line, we created a back-end impact, a year-round last year of a hundred and twelve million dollars to the metro community. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, what impact do caucuses and primaries kind of have on, have a new role?
It has a huge impact.
I would think so.
You know, in two thousand eight, we joined with the Greater Des Moines Partnership and created the Iowa Caucus Consortium. And if you go back to two thousand four specifically, those were the years when you turn on the nightly news, the national news, and they'd say, "Live from Des Moines, Iowa." They'd be outstanding in the middle of the cornfield in front of a barn, and all of us are there, you're not in Des Moines. So we created this caucus consortium for a couple of reasons. One, to create a better buzz for the media, we're a great resource for them, contact us. We can give you locations to shoot from, locations to do the Today Show on, whatever it is. We also do a big event every year, the weekend before the caucus, just for the media, called the raucous before the caucus, simply just a big cocktail reception that we throw for them. But it's nice for them, because here they're all away from their families and from all sides of the world, so it's a good PR thing. We run a bunch of different caucus programs where we'll bring in actual candidates, speaking engagements, and an array of different things throughout the year. So we're very active in that. You know, the press is having to be nationally and locally, so what's the true economic impact? It's so difficult for us to quantify, because we don't know if Buttigieg is in town, you know, this week, and where they're standing, how many people will be in, and all that, but it's a huge amount. You look at a year like this year's been with all the candidates, all the activity we had and where the actually fair, just really, all year long, there's been some type of candidate activity in the city, so.
Yeah, it kind of fade after it's been worked through, I suppose.
It'll fade, unfortunately.
Bigger fish out. Thank you.
Good question, Greg. Do you guys account for Airbnb, is that part of what your number count? How does that work?
You know, we are working, the MAC group, the Metropolitan Area, what's the seat, council? Kurt Goss from Pleasantville is kind of in charge on that. And I've sat on that committee, and they're trying to come up with some new ordinances that cities might be able to either manipulate yourself, but kind of give you at least a boilerplate on how to work with the Airbnb's. You know, the state law says that, yes, they do have to pay hotel motel tax. Are they all doing that? If you talk to Airbnb, Airbnb corporate, they say yes, if they book their rooms through them. But, you know, there's others that may have Airbnb's that I may know, you know, Jane Smith, and just call her directly, and then she's going to charge me whatever, but paying tax. We'd like to work more closely with them, you know, when they first came out, hoteliers specifically across the country hated them. But it's kind of like Uber, you know, gets here, it's going to stay. You know, my kids, I know when they travel, they stay at Airbnb's, you know, it's kind of that new thing. So we're trying to develop relationships with that. Thank you all for what you do, and thanks for the new speed line, I made it here in right in time.
Enjoy.
Thank you.
Greg, if I could just mention on this, maybe this helped to get portions of that to turn.
Could be.
That would be a good thing for Greg to keep track.
Caitlin? Caitlin Nord from United Way.
Yes, I'm going to keep it all in school and hang out with some of the rich here instead of PowerPoint. Thank you, guys, for inviting me here, I appreciate it, I will be free. I just quickly wanted to go over a little bit of United Way's goals, United Way of Central Iowa. We serve Hope Horn and Dallas Counties. So again, I'm super excited to just quickly share with you some of the goals that we've set for twenty twenty. On the brochure that I'm handing out, it's our community impact report, but I just quickly want to share the story of this phenomenal woman that's on the cover. Her name is Ronnie, there's a little bit more about her story inside, but Ronnie was, she had to make the difficult decision of, do I continue to pay for my textbooks? She was going to, she was trying to be a nurse, she was going to nursing school, or do I put a down payment on my apartment? She made the difficult decision and decided to pay the textbooks. And we found out about it, she ended up living in her car, she was breaking out in tights because studying to be a nurse is stressful, let alone living in your car while you're doing it. We found out about it, and we got her referred and enrolled in our Central Iowa Health Works program, were able to get her connected with resources, not only so that she could put her partnering funds towards an apartment, and that we can help with her education, but we're also able to get her support, so that way, you know, again, studying for this is really hard, so we were able to get her support so that way she can do that, go through that, with some of that support. But she is now a nurse at Mercy One, so super excited to continue to share her story. That's just a really quick snapshot of it, you can read a little bit more about it, but super proud to have her in our community, and she's just one of the stories. She's just one of the individuals here in Central Iowa that has been impacted by the programs funded through United Way. So quickly, to kind of walk through this brochure a little bit. United Way fights for three things, and that's the health, education, and financial stability of every Central Island. And by Central Island, again, that's Hope Horn and Dallas Counties. In education, we're working to get first ninety-five percent of Central Islanders to graduate from high school. We're very confident we're going to meet that goal by twenty twenty. We've done the math, and we anticipate that being about ninety to a hundred more students that we had to graduate from last year, this year, and we'll hit that goal. So again, super excited, we've got a big push for twenty twenty within the school systems, but we know that graduation rates start, and graduation in general starts way before just the four years that you start high school, it starts all the way back in third grade, that's the highest predictor if you graduate high school. And so you'll see a lot of initiatives that we have, volunteer opportunities and different activities with the schools that focus on that third grade reading, because again, that's one of the high predictors. In income or financial stability, we're working towards seventy-five percent of Central Islanders who are financially self-sufficient. We kind of trended in the wrong direction for a little bit. We set these goals though back in about two thousand eight, two thousand nine, kind of a rough time for the recession going on to set these goals. For the last two years, we've been trending in the right direction. And we have seen an uptick of two percent of Central Islanders who are more financially self-sufficient that equates to twenty-five thousand people, which I think is just pretty amazing, that twenty-five thousand folks here in our communities are financially self-sufficient. That Central Iowa Health Works program that I mentioned that Ronnie was in also falls under our income or financial stability work, so you can read a little bit about the Central Iowa Works program as well. And then in health, we were really focusing on those five well-being factors. And the one that we're really focusing on this year is purpose. Because we know the purpose in your career specifically leads to better health. We know the purpose is, we've seen that it's, that's decreasing, it starts to decrease and pull down all of the other four well-being factors as well. So we've got this purpose initiative that we're going to be hopefully here releasing and talking a little bit more about here in twenty twenty. I'm super excited to talk a little bit more about it and get folks really engaged within their workforce so that they can continue to be highly engaged in their workplace and highly engaged in the community. And then all on the bottom of this pamphlet, you'll see the essential needs. And essential needs focuses on the health, transportation, and housing that's strategically placed under all three, because we know that it's hard to be successful in health, education, or financial stability if your essential needs are not met. And so with us, again, just wanted to briefly, I know there's a lot of information in here to share with you guys, but just wanted to quickly share with you a little bit about that, about our goals and our goals that we're reaching towards twenty twenty. If there's an opportunity for you guys as individuals within your workplaces, with city employees, to be involved with either campaigning, or volunteering, or advocating, we'd love to be able to get you resources and connect it with the folks at our offices that can help you do that. Again, I want to real quick, because I know there's a whole lot in there, I know you've got busy agenda, but if there is any questions, I'm happy to answer any.
Any question?
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Has anything that you'd like to address, come to the podium, name, address, company, phone number? Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. Motion to approve.
Second.
Rule call.
Bill Henry, yes. Joseph Jones, yes. Lefredo, yes. Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
Full business is consideration of Resolution nineteen eleven oh seven, updating the guidelines and policies for Windsor Heights communities.
This is just a follow-up to the discussion that we had at the last council meeting, made some changes to our guidelines and whatnot, so we got it right up in there. Pearced down our guidelines quite a bit. Any questions?
I don't know if anyone else thinks it may be prudent. I see that you put in that with regards to the discounter rental, the fees may be waived by the city council. I didn't know if we should put in there, you should put in there, like a timeframe or something to indicate to people who are looking into it, you know, city council, obviously, meets whenever our meetings are set. So you're going to need to ask for permission, you know, thirties, whatever, thirty days, sixty days in advance. I just thought maybe that might be something to put in there as a guideline for people, so they'll, oh, a meeting's on that, you know, or whatever.
Sixteen days, sixteen days, anyway?
I mean, you can go get tomorrow if you want to, but if you want to get a waiver, I mean, thirty days.
That's without, but I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I thought it was something about sixty days.
Yeah, I mean, there's some stuff about sixty days, but that's.
Thirty days.
It's thirty days decision.
What does the sixty days mean, I guess?
So the thirty days, sixty days is when you want to have full payment in. And if you cancel, you're back within sixty days, we're keeping our money. That's pretty aligned with other venues. Is thirty days, or is that all right for you guys?
That's fine, mayor. Need for the discussion? Entertaining motion to also include that change on the thirty-day waiver. Somebody would make a motion.
So move.
Second.
Rule call.
Bill Henry, yes. Joseph Jones, yes. Lefredo, yes. Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
Next item is new business, consideration of Resolution nineteen eleven oh eight, approving the twenty twenty health insurance renewal on capital benefits administration contract.
Trisha Birmingham, we're our advisors here to give us a brief description. You received a new mail last week, which I think gives a basic sense of what we're viewing.
So you see the attachments, I'm assuming? And we're still, the city is still on what we call a grandmother plan. So pre-ACA, not age-rated, and we are, I should say, rolling with two plans. One is for the union, one is for the non-union. This year, there is a decrease on those premiums, one point ninety-eight percent on both of those plans. So we did, there was a committee that met, and I believe it was just employees, correct? And we, you know, said that the best, probably the best way to go this year would be just to take the grandmother plan with the decrease, and then just hopefully that the grandmother status would still hold for next year. So any questions about that? No change in benefits?
We did have employees represented, and this is being discussed.
Yes, yes, yes.
Are there other examples of municipalities that have the same plan?
As far as, are you talking about grandmother plans, or?
Yeah, just exactly like this, we're talking about.
Not that I'm aware, I mean, not that I.
We're the only ones.
Most, most of the grandmother plans have, went away. Because they had to move because of premiums, or whatever the case may be.
So there's no way of comparing costs with a different municipality using the same plan?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, no, I wouldn't know that.
Like, I think we've done that, at least when I was involved in the process a couple of years ago, that was what we did, we had looked to see what we're, how do they compare with what, you know, Waki in West Des Moines, and what kind of benefits do they offer, and what was the cost, and what was the compay of each, I mean, did they have a, did they make a contribution or not? And that's when we made some significant changes a couple of years ago. But in addition to that, your comments, just asking a question about whether or not the grandmother, grandfather, whatever kind of plan you want to call it, whether, what's the likelihood of that, I mean, if it's available, fantastic. Obviously, it always depends on the rates and those sorts of things. So I guess I didn't realize, I thought that they had all, they were all to have gone away already.
Yeah, no, the Congress keeps extending the grandmother plans. So Wellmark is telling us this year that they are not lobbying, they should keep them. So I don't know what that, to them, that means that they're not going to be approved, and there's not somebody in there fighting to keep those. So it's just kind of go to rest, and those will just go away. So that's what they're anticipating, Wellmark is, so.
Trace, I remember the comparison, but it's a new year, it's been a change. And so that's my understanding, having something out there. Just so our employees are fine with that, do we have health savings accounts available to our people?
We have what's called a health reimbursement arrangement, which is a deductible buy-down. We don't have a standard HSA where we give money to, where the city gives money to employees that accumulates in a savings account, but we do that less often than where the employees would put in prepaid and all for gift.
For these type.
For like a cafeteria or something.
How many people think, what's the given number to take advantage of that?
I'm hoping more, well, by changing to a different servicer.
But do quite a few participate in this, is my question.
I'm not sure, do you know?
I think there was maybe a handful.
Just a handful.
Yeah.
You know, I just want to make sure the employees understand that's available and what we can do for them.
Yeah.
Now, I'm talking about Travis, that our department had, that Chad talked to the police and fire, and Dalton talked to the public works people, and so forth, and had that discussion. Because I think it's real important, bottom dollar for the employees to take advantage of that. So a handful of people in there, I think we, I think you need to address that together with the employees. What I said, that.
We'll make sure that all these. I hope you're aware of the options that are available.
Please, please do.
Yeah.
I think that's traditionally been done at staff meetings in the past.
Every year, we do a staff meeting, and we do have the webbers representing those benefits. They do come in and discuss that, so. Which is the other item that was sent out, was also that changing who administers those benefits. So from right now, it's. benefits, so from right now, it's benefits Inc., and then that will change as of 1-1 to cable, as of, as of right now, for business services.
Any further discussion? Motion to approve?
Second.
Rule call.
Bill Sennery?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Fredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms? Yes.
Consideration Resolution 1910-9, resolution authorizing intergovernmental transfer of public funds agreement between Iowa DHS and the City of Winter Heights.
This is a new program that several other states already got implemented, several states are still working to implement it, but it's called GEMT, University Medical Transport, and basically, the goal of this, at the state and federal level, is to bridge the gap between what we receive for Medicaid payments, so not Medicare, not private insurance, not South Bay, but Medicaid only, brings the gap between Medicaid payments as to what we receive versus what our actual costs are incurred in transporting something. Currently, the state of Iowa pays a hundred, or well, so the state, state federal government pays a hundred and twenty-three already for transport, and as you all know, it costs much more than that to operate a service. The first year of this, the state has developed an amount of $1,183 of the average uncompensated cost that they're basing the reimbursements off of, and then going forward, we'll have a spreadsheet to be our, our collected information, and our number of calls we make, how long we spend on those calls, things of that nature, and then that will give each service an average cost per transport, and then whatever the difference is between what Medicaid pays and that average cost of transport, we'll eat on our number for the next year. We get 60% of this, the state gets 40% of it, as you can see on the second page, or the first page of the council action form, in 2017, we had 37 Medicaid transports, 2018 we were 41, so far this year, year-to-date, we're at 45, so we're going up a couple each There's some confusion over how the 40% is paid initially, we thought we got reimbursed 100% from federal government, then the intergovernmental transfer, which is what we're using that pathway, and then last week, or two weeks ago, we were told that we may have to pay that upfront before we get a bag, it'll be reimbursed to us, we're still working through that, and there's some more training going on with this, so.
Are you saying we need to have to pay the state before you get the reimbursement?
The, the problem is that it's, it's a federal program that has a state gateway, so it has to go through the state to draw down the federal money, and the state apparently doesn't have or desire to put the 40% up to get the drawdown of the other 60%, and so they're working through whether we're going to have to guess what our numbers are going to be for the month of prepaid, or how that's going to work, so, we're not real sure on that, but what, what you're approving tonight is the first step of us being able to enroll in the plan, and that's simply that intergovernmental transfer pathway for that 40% however it works out.
Yeah, because Chad, 1783 was the number, is the number, I mean, it amounts to about over $700.
70980 is our 60%. It is a voluntary program, we do not have to participate in it, however, you can see, my estimates are somewhere between $25,000 and $30,000 in revenue, it, I think would be something for us not to participate in.
No worries.
But I'm going to try to work through the cost reporting myself to save from paying a contractor to do that, and we'll see where it goes, but we have to do this, the whole thing, and I have to do the cost reports, if we even want to think about it, so that's why it's brought to you.
Okay, thank you.
Question? Motion?
Second.
Rule call.
Bill Sennery?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Fredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item is consideration of Resolution 1911-10, resolution approving building inspection services. We have two representatives from the same building here to answer any questions at the council, which we have, about how they do their work, so if you have any questions on them, they're here to answer those.
So I just, I read quickly through the service agreement, and so just to verify, so it says that we're entering in a one-year agreement, and that we can terminate within 30 days, but Mark, in a conversation I had with you, you stated that we're only billed for the services that they do, right? We will call them, we will call them, they won't get, receive calls from...
Right.
Okay. Other people, and then, because I also saw somewhere here... fielding inquiries, taking calls from property owners and contractors, contractors, those sorts of things, so I don't know if that's a, like, I guess, I'm sure some of those things maybe have to happen, I guess I just don't want property owners owing them and asking them to come and do things without the city knowing what's going on, right?
Yeah. So my conversations with Jeff, this is Jeff and Ron here, they're only going to be doing the work that we send their way, so the homeowners, when we call them, and racking up a bill, they're only going to be doing the work that we have collected permit fees on, and so this is a net neutral cost for us, we're still going to be collecting revenues on the permit fees, and I can't remember the exact split, but we're still going to retain a small portion of those, so the remainder of those permit fees will cover their costs for the inspection services, so, and they will be, people that, that currently hold building permits will be requesting their inspections directly through these guys for the time being, so we won't be playing this telephone game where they're going to call me, Andy, inspection, and I'll call these guys that have new inspection, and just call them directly, keep them on the half of it, and these are only on projects that I'm unsuited to handle, so, commercial or large-scale, large, sorry. Or large-scale residential remodels, so, sorry. Don't have that social bad.
Yeah. Anyway, if, if, because I've run across, and the others I'm sure have too, a complaint about planning zoning and the inspections and that, the price, et cetera, where would they take those concerns?
So we're, I mean, we're going to handle, these, we're contracting these guys to handle professional services kind of things, so I think that adjusting our permit fee schedules is the law and policy thing, and that will be handled by staff.
So we're not talking about, like, a homeowner from the ground up, or something like that?
Technically, we do request a permit or require a permit for a re-ruption.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
They would do that?
They would do the inspection, well, I could do that one, but I'm really more concerned about, for example, like, if I'm learning Academy, doing foot inspections on, it's kind of just commercially, so, I've done a couple of reroute inspections, deck, driveway, stuff that I can handle, I'm going to continue to handle.
I mean, I just know, because I've had complaints about the permit process in the past, but it's from homeowners.
If you get more complaints, please let me know.
Well, I've already let you know in just the past, so I'm just wondering, would they go?
We address them with homeowner, and I believe that the complaints, the ones that I've dealt with anyway, have been to homeowner satisfaction.
Yeah, I'm not questioning that, that's past, right, I'm talking about current, the homeowners, these gentlemen in this company, do they go directly to the PAM or through us?
Through us.
Good question.
So, mindless speaking, through you guys?
No, we're, we're basically here to support you, and you can set that up however you like, if you like your established builders, contact us directly, set up appointments for your inspections, for any projects, that's great, if you've got citizens coming to you, next question, you can support that.
Sure. I always want, like, our residents to have a due process approach, if they are concerned about something, they can get the answers to those. Where it goes, I don't know if it's that important, but if we want people to be satisfied with the question being answered, if you side with us.
Any questions, see, that's the best system.
Motion to approve?
Second. Bill Sennery?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Fredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item is setting a public hearing for proposed ordinance 1911, which will amend Chapter 60-07, truck route. Need motion to set the public hearing for December 2nd at 6:00 PM.
I'll move.
Sorry.
Rule call.
Bill Sennery?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Fredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item is, should we move the next, the meeting February 3rd, 2020, to February 4th, 2020, due to the Iowa Congress?
Of course we should.
Need a motion to do the proof of that, unless there's any discussion.
Rule call. Bill Sennery?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Fredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms? Yes.
Can you make the note, it will be February 4th, not February 3rd. Next item is, for discussion only, commercial tax abatement. We've had some discussion on that briefly, we have never gone forward with it, probably should discuss. Mike, did you start this at one time, or question it?
No, it's actually Mark's fault, he wrote it up.
That's what I get, go over here.
Well, no, what happened was, I inquired with Mark about the herd property over on 73rd or 63rd, and took him in, following an update with him about, you know, if anything was happening, and I guess the short answer is no, and he suggested, or he brought up that many communities in the metro have commercial tax payment programs, and by many, it's, at least at first glance, it's Des Moines, Adele, Pleasant Hill, Norwalk, Bondurant, Waukees, and there, there probably are others, but that's just what I looked at. We actually have one under residential, which I didn't know at first, because it's nowhere clearly laid out on the website, and it's completely different than any other sort of residential tax payment program in the metro, from what I looked up for these other I think more or less, the standard laid out in, from these other, these other cities, and the standard comes from the code, is that for new commercial or industrial structures, new buildings, or if the value is increased by 15%, there's an abatement from either 1 to 3, or 1 to 5 meters, with a decreasing percentage of the abatement, and that's from both these city programs, but it's primarily from the code. So I was bringing it forward as a suggestion, I think we all campaigned on economic development, and that hasn't exactly blown up in any recent election, so it was just something I thought I'd bring to the table to discuss, I certainly don't like, you know, what we read in the news about Facebook, or Apple, or now Amazon, basically being given the farm by cities, but it fits as one more tool, a standard tool, that we could use to potentially encourage some sort of development at a commercial level, I'd encourage us to just look at it.
Mark, I talked with the Taxpayer Association, Mark, Dave, I was there, anyway, we talked to different cities, Des Moines was an example, Des Moines is dealing with a lot of lighting properties, that's the main thing right now, Inc. and E doesn't do any abatements, as I recall, because they can't even keep up with the growth, and Bondurant has it, and they have, I think it's a six-year plan, three-year plan, for three years, 100% for three years, and the six-year is 80%.
Well, it's a declining scale.
So it starts at 80-year, correct? It was kind of 10% a year. But, you know, and that's, that was private land, it wasn't city, and so the city wanted them to get involved with it, to provide, to reduce, I don't know if you were there then, Mark, or not.
No, that's all supposed to be, I can't take any credit or blame.
Okay, but, so it wasn't like the city-owned land, it was the herd property, you know, the 63rd University is coming up, or the Sherwood Forest Corner, here, or the 66th University thing, so, yeah, I think that would be a good case study of how Bondurant approached that, with soliciting that, I don't, I'm sure it wasn't just the same that approached numbers.
Well, I can tell you from my past life, that Bondurant's had that program for a long, long, long time, way before I was there, and it's, it's offered to any business that fits the description of the eligible businesses, you can have 100,000 building, or 100,000 building, or 100 million dollars building, to that program, it's a commercial industrial facility.
But I think it's certainly worthy consideration, and certainly, as we're trying to get those properties occupied, trying to help get those properties occupied, and it certainly is a worthy consideration.
I think we talked about it in economic programs before, it's not something that we feel, we hope to.
Take it to committee and discuss it deeply, and bring it back to staff.
Yeah, good. Mark? Yeah, we will pursue it. Now, I, I don't know what's topical, I just bring up, it had nothing to do with the abatements, but there's, relative continent smart companies at the state, and they had some marketing consultants, and I was pretty enlightened, really, because there's, there's factors that are affecting the marketing of your city, and there are factors that aren't, and they kind of got it prioritized, for example, and this surprised me, when they talked about city parks and the amenity things, that had no effect on employers coming into the city, they want to know the location, available workforce, and any, and structure that they develop in that city, so, I mean, I think we should maybe have to go through a consulting or something, too, in terms of marketing.
Well, didn't we just spend money on the pitch book, so we just did?
The pitch book.
Yeah. We're open to the discussion some more time.
Yeah, next one, you can bring, you can take it to your committee, as far as I can suggest, but I just think it's kind of an area of what you were talking about. Okay, that's, I'm done.
Okay, next item, reports?
No? Wait. Dalton, Veterans Day, very enjoyable, we apparently have a first time, not first time, long time coming communications meeting on the 4th of December, so, looking forward to that.
Tricia? Metro Waste is on Wednesday, so I will go to that, and congratulations to Dalton on a successful Veterans Day program, so thank you for it.
Please convey to the MWA that the presentation that was given at the MAC meeting was very interesting and informative.
Very good.
Mike came and explained a lot of the stuff that they were going to be doing, but I would look forward to a report from you and a later point, that all the stuff that's going on, if you would, please.
going on, if you would, please.
We can certainly have them come in and do that. I give updates on things that we do.
Maybe we should do that. Trace, if you want to apply that. I think it was a very good, very informative meeting to a lot of the adjacent communities and whatever, but I think it should be beneficial for all of us here to direct. You know, my lake meeting, which is Metro Iowa Local Association of Governments, this week, and we had nine legislators there, and they sort of informed us as to what some of their priorities were going to be, and it's like mental health, water, taxes. And after we got done with those three items, it was a whole lot more conversations, business as usual. They're cutting all of them, or? No, no. We're trying to figure out how to allocate bets. We all know how that has been, so we'll look forward to more. Mark, you got some information on budget?
Yes. It appears that the FY21 tax rate can be reduced by more than the sixty-nine cents referenced in the lost pre-built materials. I'm waiting for confirmation from the city's financial advisor about the durability of some ideas I'm planning to use to further reduce the tax rate. I expect to have a word or report on this at December 2nd meeting. Also, the city's finance director will be starting on December 2nd, and having Rochelle here will help with trying out different scenarios. I expect to receive preliminary evaluation information from the county, from the county assessor's office in the first week or so of December. Having that information will also help with reviewing different options. We're still fairly early in the process and are staying on target with the dates I set up in the October 12th budget development timeline. That timeline states that the preliminary FY21 budget, the tax rate, will be reported to the council on December 13th. At this point, that is still a realistic expectation.
Mark, so the department have given the request to you?
Yes, I have.
Okay, good.
Mark, is there any update on the Sixty-third University? Just, I know that was an RP, is that time a last?
Oh, yes, that's several months ago, there was, there were no respondents, but I can tell you that I received an email, sort of, today from a commercial realtor who the church is interested in using to list their properties, and they've asked some questions. I will be getting them the answers to those questions tomorrow.
Anything further from Mark, or Travis?
I just put in the, you know, financial report, this is published, and then filed with the auditor of state once we get the publication back. Working with final stages of the audit with Marvin, last weekend, this weekend, he will be here to present on the sixteenth of December. That's it.
I'm sorry, what day did you say?
Sixteenth. Is that the second name?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jim?
They are to start with their report, they put in the package. I think we're both all on.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a couple of things that were not budget related here? According to city engineer Justin Hertz, the schedule for the College, Allison, Sixty-Ninth Street, street reconstruction project, called its approval on the plans at the December, January 6th meeting, been opening on February 11th, and been awarded during the February 17th council meeting. All work is scheduled to be completed by the end of the 2020 construction season. This is scheduled to be opened by the DOT for the University Avenue project on February 18th. It usually takes a month or two to go through the DOT contract approval process. Project should be open to traffic, but possibly not a hundred percent complete by the end of 2020 construction season. The College, Allison, Sixty-Ninth, and University Avenue projects combined have an estimated cost of sixteen point seven million dollars. This is a fairly aggressive amount from a financing perspective. Staff has had several meetings with the city's financial advisor, Tiana Poole, on structuring the debt for these projects. There is a way to finance all of this work, but it will probably involve a somewhat unconventional approach. That doesn't mean it's a bad idea, it will just be different from what people are used to. As I've mentioned in the past, it's usually not a good idea to delay construction projects because they will become more expensive in the future. I had a description of the financing plan for these projects at one of the December meetings. And to the council members, please remember your appointments with the city administrator, search consultant, Charlie Stevens, for tomorrow. Let me know if you need a reminder on the time. Thank you.
Mark, I understand, that's sixteen plus million dollars. So what university?
That's, that's for four streets, it's university, and then college, Sixty-Ninth, and Allison.
Okay.
College, Allison, and Sixty-Ninth are being bid as one project, and universities are being bid as one project.
I'm, I'm imagining Justin has one still come down, between projects, or not?
Dalton's saying yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay, let me, let's see that.
Yes, I have seen, there are separate estimates for each street, you want to know, I can tell you what they are.
Yeah, I agree with you, the longer we delay, the more it's going to be against. Maybe now, or maybe later.
Dalton, you got anything more to say?
Just written report, if you have any questions, I'm gonna.
Any questions for Dalton? Next item is closed session pursuant to Iowa Code 21-H5, to discuss strategy with council matters of presently in litigation or where litigation's imminent, or is disclosure would be likely to prejudice dissuade any positions to be over in body and litigation. First, you go into closed session. Second. Rule call.
Phil Henry?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we're in a class, anybody?
You're not talking to me?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I have to be in the talk.